Us on a Tuesday in downtown Charlottesville. Last night, a city council meeting. Last night, we saw fired police chief Rashal Brackney, Dr. Brackney, speaking before city council in the public comments, the public speaking portion of the of the meeting. We'll play her commentary to counsel, which was a cornucopia of thoughts on policing and the state of the union of policing locally. We're going to talk on today's show, the expectations from the city manager of Charlottesville for this $6.2 million homeless shelter. I think shelter is not the best use of the best description of what we're trying to do here. You know, next to the bypass. Was it 2000 Holiday Drive is the address, Judah?
Yeah.
Campus strikes me as a better word. Campus, because shelter is too typecasted. But we're going to offer city manager Sam Sanders thoughts on what he says should be the narrative, his narrative of the $6.2 million to create a shelter, campus, dormitory, whatever we're going to call it. We're going to talk on today's program about Allison Spillman. I am told by reliable people that there is a movement to launch a recall campaign against Allison Spillman. I want to break down and analyze the pros and cons of a recall campaign to force Allison Spillman off the Alamo County School Board. It's a complicated, complicated endeavor. But there is a discussion at the very least, in fact, organization is happening now to potentially rally against Spillman in a recall campaign. We're going to talk on today's program about something that I find incredibly. What's, what's the, what am I feeling here with this change.org petition?
Can you give me a clue?
Angry, confused, befuddled, just. There's a campaign that has now 635 signatures that is asking at Western Alamo High School for biological males to stay out of girls locker rooms at the school. I'll read you a couple paragraphs from the campaign. Recently, in Alamo County, our high school, Western Alamo High School, has had an increase of incidents with biological males entering the girls bathrooms. They do not go in there to use the restroom. Rather, they just stand there and talk to people. There's been continually voiced to these male students and administrators that this makes the women, the girls in the restroom uncomfortable. But we have been repeatedly told that there is nothing they can do. Our school has multiple gender neutral bathrooms throughout it, and we believe that if boys are not comfortable in their assigned restroom, that they should go to the gender neutral ones rather than making the majority of girls feel uncomfortable for their own benefit. The Virginia Board of Education has stated that biological males are not allowed in women's restrooms or changing rooms. But Alamo County's inclusivity policy states that boys are allowed in women's, girls' restrooms. What the hell is going on in this world that we live in right now? What is going on, and now obviously, these are my words, at Alamo County Public Schools? Where is the leadership at ACPS? What is Dr. Haas doing? What is the school board doing? I get this petition sent to me by parents today that they literally are having to pass a digital petition around begging Alamo County Public Schools to keep boys, men, out of girls', women's locker rooms. And the men, the boys that are going into women's locker rooms are doing it under the guise of they may be transitioning from male to female and are considering it.
It doesn't even, you think that's what it is?
Oh, I know that's what it is, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Weird.
It's leveraging, it's leveraging the inclusivity policy
Yeah.
as a back door to go into girls locker rooms as a biological male.
I'd say it's front door.
Some kind of door. A lot we're going to cover on today's program, ladies and gentlemen, including the expectations for the University of Virginia football team as they head into the bye week. So much to cover on the show. We'll highlight Sir Speedy of Central Virginia. Conan Owen is a Darton graduate. Conan Owen owns Sir Speedy of Central Virginia, locally owned and operated. If you have a need, a signage need, a direct mail campaign need, a stickers, a print, a printing need, a banner need, like what's behind me, graphics need. Sir Speedy of Central Virginia, Conan Owen, are who you call. Our firm actively, actively works alongside Conan's company, Sir Speedy, for our real estate holding needs and the needs of our clients within our consulting and advertising agencies. A lot on the docket. Judah Studio Camera had a city council meeting last night. Then we'll go two shot. I think we're going to offer some highlights and lowlights of last night's city council meeting, including Sam Sanders's expectations. He's trying to set the record of what he wants the community to hear from him about his narrative on what this $6.2 million taxpayer purchased that in 5-0 capacity, 5-0 capacity was approved by council last night, $6.2 million for a 27,000 square foot office building at 2000 Holiday Drive, next to a couple of hotels within walking distance of a bus stop, walking distance of Whole Foods, walking distance of the Rivanna Trail. He's going to give you about two or three minutes of commentary. We cut that clip. We're going to play it for you as one of the highlights of the meeting. Then, as we cover the meeting in a couple of different ways, we're also going to play a clip of fired police chief Dr. Brackney and her quote, air quotes, state of the union for policing in Charlottesville in 2025 as we headed to 2026. Nikia Walker also in attendance at last night's meeting. Nikia Walker also spoke before council. Nikia Walker, Chief Brackney, sitting next to each other in this council meeting. Nikia Walker dressed in all pink shirt and headdress. Both were, were sitting in council chambers, masked in council chambers, and both spoke to council. We'll talk about that, play those clips here in a matter of moments. I'm going to ask you, the viewer and listener, I'm going to ask you this question. I'm going to ask you first this question. Are Alamo County Public Schools unstable right now?
Yeah, I think they're beset by, by the same trouble we've been seeing across the United States. There was after the, after there was the tragic shooting of a, of a public figure, Charlie Kirk. I think we've seen a lot of clashing between the left and the right. We see continuation of, of what followed Charlie Kirk's death in a lot of poorly thought out social media posts, to put it lightly. We see that now in, in the aide, the assistant, I mean, the district attorney, what, what's the word I'm looking for? Jay Jones, in his statements from a few years ago.
Attorney general candidate.
Yeah, and I think that, I think that we're just seeing a clash of ideals come to the fore across the board. And we're especially seeing that in, in Alamo County, the Alamo County Schools, where there was a continuation of poorly thought out social media posts, the most recent from Allison Spillman, equating, equating a group in her school system with, with the KKK. And, and we're seeing ideals, you know, opposing ideals, whether it's bringing SROs back into the schools, whether it's allowing young men into young women's restrooms, whether it's, you know, allowing a speaker come and talk to a group of students during lunch.
So much to cover on the program today. Jim Hinchley, I'll get to these comments here in a matter of moments. These will be in, as they apply to Allison Spillman and a campaign or a petition to remove an elected official. There's multiple steps that need to happen, and there is an active campaign behind the scenes materializing for this. They had to get 10% of the votes. There were roughly 40,000 votes in the Meg Bryce, Allison Spillman at large race. 10% of the votes are 4,000. I think this group that is actively working or considering this, you know, removal of Allison Spillman from the school board push can get 4,000 votes. But then there's a number of other steps besides that that they have to go through, a number of other hurdles. And I think this group, and they watch and they listen to the show. I spoke to one of the key members of the group this morning in off the record capacity. He reached out to me. One of the reasons we get the information that we get, which we relay to you, is because we respect on the record and off the record requests by the people that are relaying the information to us. I was able to tell you weeks before the news broke that the city was in negotiating a purchase, $6.2 million of a 27,000 square foot office building before the news actually hit the agenda of city council. Last week, we were talking about this weeks in advance because the provider of the information understood that I would respect his identity and his request for anonymity. He also understands that the platform we have here has a lot of reach, and like every day, all media is watching us now. So for the media that are watching us now, I would suggest that you cover Thursday's school board meeting, where it's going to be, oh geez Louise, just a clash of ideologies. Thursday's school board meeting will be one of the most populated and attended school board meetings in the history of Alamo County. Thursday's school board meeting is going to require a lot of police attention from Colonel Sean Reeves, Alamo County's head honcho. Thursday's school board meeting is going to be volatile in nature, temperamental, explosive, and let's hope to God not dangerous.
Amen.
Thursday's school board meeting will unfortunately, unfortunately, have a lot of outsiders who do not live in Alamo or Charlottesville, Central Virginia, attending the meeting. Outsiders that could be better characterized as activists or extremely far right and extremely far left.
Agitators.
Agitators is a better description. I mean, do we go as far as calling them Antifa?
I mean, essentially, the people that we saw take over our city in, at A-12.
Yeah, I mean, it's Thursday's school board meeting is a scary one. And it's, it's scary because of Spillman's word choice. And because of Spillman's word choice and her linking and labeling of students at Western Alamo High School to the Ku Klux Klan, there's now a behind the scenes movement that's happening to recall or to, to, to push Allison Spillman, force Allison Spillman off, off the school board and out of her, her at large seat that she earned. Goodness gracious. And talking with this parent today, that was in 2023 that she won the race. She's in, finishing her second year. A recall vote. Has there ever been, Jim, a recall vote successfully executed in Alamo County history? John Blair and Jim Hinchley, both watching the program, you would be best suited for answering that question. Has there ever been a successful recall vote executed in Alamo County history? I don't have that answer. I'd like to crowdsource that answer. Judah, I think, Judah I think is Googling it.
I'm going to try, yeah.
Jim would know that. John, I think, would know that. But that's happening now. The caution that I offered the parent that is leading this recall charge, I offered these words of caution, okay? Hear me out, viewers and listeners. Do I think Allison Spillman should resign from the Alamo County School Board? Emphatically and firmly, I say yes, because she's put students within her school system in danger through her word choice, through, through negligently and, and, and downright dangerously labeling or linking these students to the Ku Klux Klan. Okay? The fact that Allison Spillman has not resigned at this point is an indication to me that she will not resign on her own accord. Because if she was going to offer her resignation, it would have already happened. Perhaps there's a sliver of a chance the resignation happens during the school board meeting on Thursday night. But if you're Spillman, why would you resign on Thursday night when you're in front of an auditorium where half the room is probably going to despise you, hate your guts, and want to hang you in effigy or literally? You would do it beforehand to keep the, the, the damage, the collateral damage she's facing right now to a minimum. So as a result, I don't think Spillman will resign willingly. If she's not willingly going to resign, the next step is to force Spillman to resign. And a parent leading this charge with a very strategic and organized effort and very strategic and organized thinkers is, is, is called me today, asking for our counsel, asking questions, offered me the green light that I could talk about this on the show today without linking who's leading the charge at this moment. And my counsel to this, uh, parent, this team that is leading it, said, you have to be really careful because if you do issue this recall, if you go with this recall movement to get her ousted and you do not win and Spillman beats you and stays on the school board for the remaining two years and change of her term, then all you have done is embolden her, empowered her. You've fueled her fire and perhaps have made her Teflon. If Allison Spillman comes on the other side of this, basically unscathed and unscathed, I mean, she has been pierced with arrows personally, professionally, in the media. And that arrow piercing has unfortunately and unfairly spilled over to her family, her husband, his business online. And his ties to this are not fair. I hope the Spillman family hears this. The ire and the nastiness you get in the game of politics, she entered this with her word choice, should be directed at her. But they should not, it should not be directed to her, her husband, like it's been done, and her kids, like it's been done.
100%.
I don't believe that her husband, her children, or even close friends or any extended family should be in this swimming pool of nastiness that Allison chose to enter herself. In fact, she filled the swimming pool of nastiness first. She deserves it. Her husband and extended family and kids do not. But they're facing it, such is the era we live in. Okay? My caution to this group that's doing this recall movement, actively working with attorneys, I have their approval to talk kind of the strategy they're doing, actively working with attorneys, is to be very, very careful. Because if you lose and Spillman stays on the board and finishes her term, all they've done is empowered Spillman for another school board run, empowered her platform where she can potentially trampoline into higher office, board of supervisors, state delegate, any kind of other office.
Yeah.
So tread cautiously. Because if you lose this fight, then all you've done is made your enemy stronger. That's my, was my pro bono counsel today in about a 25 minute phone call. And, and, and for the record, those are generally, you know, something like that, we don't charge. But that's, that is how we make our living, is offering counsel like this. So for Allison Spillman, who, who watches the program and her camp, you should know this. There is a recall campaign that is being organized right now by people of influence in Alamo County to try to oust you from the school board. And I caution this campaign to be very careful with doing this because it's not a slam dunk that they will be able to recall and beat you. Jim Hinchley has offered this comment. First, he's offered the, is this, is the right phrase here? The, the procedure here? The procedure to petition for the removal of an officer from a, you know, position of elected office? And it's a lengthy message he sent from the Virginia State Code. It's a very complicated process. Jim says, I have previously served as a special prosecutor on a removal petition in another jurisdiction because that prosecutor recused himself. That's how that works. A Commonwealth attorney may not properly prosecute a removal petition against an elected official in his or her own jurisdiction. So if this happens, Jim Hinchley would recuse himself and a Commonwealth attorney from another jurisdiction would serve as the special prosecutor on the removal of the, removal petition. John Blair is offering some comments. He's number two in the family. Did you get Jim's photo on screen?
Yeah.
Fantastic. Always, always like Mr. Hinchley's commentary. Let's see. Yeah, John's right. You have to get 10% of the signatures to get that before you go to court. 10% of the signatures would be roughly 4,000 of the 40,000. I think this organization team can get 4,000 signatures. I think they can get 4,000 signatures. I said that. I think you can get 4,000 because Spillman's comments were so nasty. The rest of the stuff, I don't think you're going to get. He says, here's a warning about recalls in Virginia, John. The locality has to pay the office holders legal fees if the court finds that there is not malfeasance. He says, a forgotten piece of Alamo history. The petitions did qualify for a recall, but a judge found that Chris Dummler, yes, that's right, did not commit malfeasance. The county had to pay for Dummler's legal fees. Chris Dummler, if memory serves correct, was the embattled Alamo County Board of Supervisor from the Scottsville District, a young attorney who stepped in a pile of doo doo. Was it because of? I, I want to, I got to choose my words carefully. It's Chris Dummler. I, I need to choose my words carefully here before saying this, so I'm not, and doo doo myself. Alamo County Board of Supervisor. So I'm going to straight up Google this and read from Sevillepedia. Chris Dummler resigned from the Board of Supervisors on June 5, 2013, ending a 17 month tenure that was embroiled in controversy following his arrest on sexual assault charges. I thought it was sexual assault charges. Dummler was elected to Alamo County Board of Supervisors in 2011 to represent the Scottsville Magisterial District, where he has lived since 20, since 2006. He ran, he runs an independent law practice or did in the town of Scottsville. This is from Sevillepedia. Dummler has lived in the Scottsville Magisterial District since graduating from college in 2006. He was a resident of the town of Scottsville at the time. He was arrested by Alamo County Police and charged with one count of forcible sodomy. He later pled guilty to misdemeanor sexual battery and was sentenced to 30 days in jail. Dummler resigned following the end of the petition process. So they tried to recall Dummler. As John Blair said, a forgotten piece of history. The petitions did qualify for a recall, but a judge found that Chris Dummler did not commit malfeasance. And then the county had to pay for Chris Dummler's legal fees. So if Chris Dummler, who was charged with forcible sodomy and later pled guilty to misdemeanor sexual battery when he was a Board of Supervisors member, was not pushed off the board through this petition process, he later resigned on his own accord. Is Allison Spillman going to get pushed out through the petition process?
It can be tough.
And that's why the counsel to the parent today was, be careful because all you're going to do is potentially maybe almost make her a martyr, which is crazy to say. I think, I think that does a disservice to the word martyr. But you could martyr her and, and, and could fuel a, a, a platform and strengthen the brand. Regardless, her resignation, if she was going to offer it, I thought would have happened by now. Don Gathers continues to leave comments in the comment section of this show that he admires Allison Spillman for her stance. I responded to his comment yesterday that I was disappointed in Mr. Gathers for, for admiring Allison Spillman. And I left that in a comment. I didn't say it on the show. Now I'm going to respond to Mr. Gathers, the known activist in Charlottesville who routinely speaks before city council meeting, with my words by saying, Mr. Gathers, I'm disappointed that you're supporting Allison Spillman.
Yeah, 100%.
The Don Gathers I know does not leave comments on a daily basis championing the Allison Spillman commentary of linking students to the Ku Klux Klan.
Yeah.
These comments of, these words of support, Don Gathers, do not in line with the character I know that you, you very, that you have. A man of noteworthy character, Don Gathers. We don't always agree on stuff. But goodness gracious, how do you admire somebody that's linking children to the Ku Klux Klan?
Yeah.
What are you doing here, sir? And Bob Yarborough is right. The, he says, the recall petition is not enough for her to remove, to be removed, right? That just advances it to the circuit court where, where, where a judge decides.
Yeah. I'm looking at some information here. This is also from the Sevillepedia. And it says that if the 10% is met, then instead of a public vote, a judge would hold a trial to determine if the elected official violated a specified list of statutory rules, including neglect of duty, misuse of office, incompetence, and conviction on a number of misdemeanors. I would think that anyone attempting to get this started, look very closely at what those statutory rules are because that's the bar that you need to, to meet.
Yeah, I, I, yeah. I mean, if anything, there should be a recall for Matthew Haas's job. I, I don't see this. This is only going to strengthen Spillman.
Potentially.
We'll wait and see what happens on Thursday night. If you were a betting man, you know I'm a betting man. How's this for a proposition bet? A prop bet? I'll give you, do you think Allison Spillman resigns on Thursday at the school board meeting?
No.
You do not?
I don't think so. But who knows? It would be crazy.
I don't think she's going to resign either. I don't think she's going to resign either. So maybe we don't have a prop bet there. All right, why don't we go to highlights and lowlights from city councils meeting? Let me set the stage first. You still have this, Deep Throat's got some comments here. The only question I have about the Spillman recall effort is, where do I send my check? You know, the thing is, is this. Allison Spillman, she crushed Meg Bryce in the race.
She also got a lot of money.
They both got a lot of money. And it's, it wasn't, it wasn't because of money. They both got a ton of money. Allison Spillman got 61.8% of the vote. Call it 62% of the vote. Meg Bryce got 38% of the vote. She lost by, I mean, doing some quick math, 24 points, 24 percentage points. Allison Spillman had 24,174 votes. Meg Bryce had 14,815. Have some of the 24,174 people that voted for Allison Spillman, have they spilled away from her because of these comments? Yes, some of them have. But the ones that stand by Allison Spillman are probably standing by her at an even more significant level of loyalty.
Yeah.
And if I'm seeing somebody like Don Gathers, who I respect[1782.13] And if I'm seeing somebody like Don Gathers, who I respect, on three or four days in a row on this show, in the comments section, next to his name, saying, "I stand with Spillman and support what she did," and he's a man who I respect saying it, how about all these people out there that I think are wackadoodles? They must be thinking it as well.
Yeah.
Is that a wrong read?
No, definitely. I, as we, uh, as we talked about in previous shows, the fact that, uh, the, um, the, the message from Almaral County, uh, Almaral County Supervisor of the schools, along with his, uh, his chairs, was, uh, essentially a tacit, uh, uh, you know, uh, a tacit agreement with her statement.
I mean, this, what's happening at Almaral County Public Schools right now? We're, we're all in agreement that Almaral County Public Schools right now seem unstable, right? They seem unstable. The superintendent, the school board chair, and the vice chair basically penned a letter of support for Allison Spillman without denouncing her word choice. It was, it was-
Oh, they didn't even touch it.
They didn't even touch Spillman's. Their, their unwillingness to denounce Spillman and say, "We don't stand with her," basically puts them in support of Spillman's word choice.
Yeah.
Then you have this petition that's circling, Jesus, let's talk about this. There's a petition that's circulating that's been originated by, by, inspired by female minors, by girls at Western Almaral High School. Girls at Western Almaral High School are, 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 are literally legitimately, ladies and gentlemen, doing a change.org petition, you read the petition here, J. Dobbs, that is basically begging people to sign a petition to keep boys out of the girls' locker rooms. Boys are going into the girls' locker rooms at Western Almaral High School under the guise that they're trans curious, considering transitioning, and because Almaral County Public Schools has this inclusivity, uh, is it a policy? What, what, what's the word? It's in the petition. Almaral inclusivity policy. Yeah. Because there's this policy out there, if you're trans curious genuinely, or if you're just a guy that wants to girl, go into a girl's locker rooms and look at girls as they're changing and undressing, you can do this and not face retribution from Almaral County Public Schools. What the hell's going on here?
I wouldn't even say anything about whether or not they're, they're trans curious. I mean, there's no, how do you prove that? Essentially, it's, it's young men being able to go into young women's bathrooms. It's just crazy.
You wanna set the stage for the viewers and listeners?
Yeah.
I will share the petition in the comment section of my personal Facebook page. Find me on Facebook, follow me on Facebook, you'll see it. I'll, I'll also share it on Twitter and a couple of other places. I'll share it on the I Love Seville Facebook page, so you can see it and sign it. Judah, set the stage.
Or you can just Google "petition biological males Almaral." I found it really easily that way.
Okay, set the stage.
But here's the, uh, here's the issue. Recently in Almaral County, our high school, Western Almaral, has had an increase of incidents with biological males entering the girls' bathroom. They do not go there, they do not go in there to use the restroom, rather just stand there and talk to people. It has been continually voiced to these male students and administrators that this makes the women in the restroom uncomfortable, but we have been repeatedly told that there is nothing they can do. Our school has multiple gender-neutral bathrooms throughout it, and we believe that if men are not comfortable in their assigned restroom, that they should be going to said gender-neutral ones, rather than making the majority of women feel uncomfortable for their own benefit. The Virginia Board of Education has stated that biological males are not allowed in women's restrooms or changing rooms, but Almaral County's inclusivity policy states that they are allowed. While we support everyone and believe people should be allowed to express themselves freely, we also believe students' privacy and safety should be equally prioritized without bias. This petition is for the purpose of changing the Almaral County policy to no longer allow biological men into the women's restrooms, and we would appreciate every vote we can get to help make this hap, this change happen. And I know that there's going to be pushback, saying that this is directly targeted at trans kids and trying to push them out of what they believe to be their, uh, appropriate bathroom of choice, but I think the inclusivity policy is far too lax and, and leaves open the fact that young men can enter a young woman's bathroom without repercussion.
I, I, exactly. This is so obvious. Ginny Who is watching the program on Twitter. The show airs on 15 Facebook pages, 15 Twitter accounts, YouTube, iTunes, Apple Podcasts, the Fountain App, LinkedIn, wherever you get your social media and podcasting content. Ginny Who's photo on screen. She says, "Anyone who didn't already know there would be people taking advantage of this inclusivity policy is an absolute idiot." She can't, can't say it any more straightforwardly than that.
Yeah, there's not-
I rarely talk about this on the show. I rarely talk about this on, what I'm gonna say on the show. My wife and I have chosen the private school route for our oldest son, who's in second grade, and it's not cheap. We're talking soup to nuts, about 25 grand a year for second grade. Would we like an additional $25,000 a year for ourselves? Of course we would. He started in kindergarten. Kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th. We're talking 13 years. Let's just use 25K as a base and times it by 13 years. That's $325,000. Okay? The reality is, the cost of tuition escalates every year to keep up with inflation, to keep up with other costs that are out there. We're basically in this 13-year period of time, soup to nuts, probably at 400,000 plus. Would, and then we have a second kid coming. How can you do it for the first one and, 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 and not do it for the second? It would be as parents to, 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 you, you would feel like you're, you're doing a disservice to your second child. So if it's 400 for the first one, by the time the second one is done, who's two years old now, so he's not close to entering kindergarten, costs are gonna go up, it's probably gonna be 500 for him. By the time we're done educating our kids through high school and into a high school diploma, combined, we're talking 900 grand that otherwise we could have to do whatever we want with, invest however we choose. But we love our children so much, we choose to do it this way. And one of the primary reasons that I felt inspired to do this, and why my amazing wife chose as well, is because the absolute terrible way Almaral County Public Schools handled COVID and the pandemic. And since COVID and the pandemic, Almaral County Public Schools have worsened in leadership and have worsened in KPIs, have worsened in execution, and have worsened in the business of public education. Third-grade SOLs and, and reading and math standards are down. Reading and writing is down. Diplomacy is down. Graduation, truancy is up. You now, at Western Almaral High School, who is moniker'd Saint Anne's West because Croze and Old Trail have become so wealthy that it's nicknamed Stab West, you now have a petition that is circulating, that's been authored by high school girls, begging people to sign because they have boys going into their locker rooms and watching them undress and change in their most intimate of moment at a school. Hunter Craig, watching the program, friend of the program, he says, Hunter does, "Competition and education will solve all problems. Imagine if you were limited to shopping at only one grocery store, depending on where you live. You would, what, you would not want to eat the produce or the meat if you only could shop at one grocery store, depending on where you live." He makes a reference to what Yonkin tried to push, I think the reference Hunter Craig is making, to, to the voucher program, where parents would be given a, a voucher equivalent to the cost of, 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 of a year's education.
Yeah.
And then said, "You can spend this money for education how you see fit." I had no problem with the voucher program. Jesus. Use the money how you see fit. The activists, the far-left in our community, immediately started crapping all over the voucher program because they knew if, if the voucher program was out there, that would shrink potentially enrollment at the schools, and the schools are funded in part by headcount.
Yeah.
The far-left also probably knew that the private schools would get sharp and wise, and they would increase the cost of tuition, probably to the tune of what the voucher was offered to the parents.
Yeah. I would hope not, but-
They're a business. They're a business. Capex programs, Capex funding, uh, athletic department funding, teacher funding, curriculum funding, uh, expansion funding. They're a business. Of course the private schools would uptick tuition based on the delta that the voucher I, it's just, how are we in a world where teenage girls are having to beg?
Yeah.
And a change.org petition is digital begging. They're digitally begging for the support of people-
Yeah.
-to keep them safe in their most intimate moments while away from their parents. In a one-week period of time, Almaral County Public Schools has had a school board member link students at Western Almaral High School to the Ku Klux Klan, and in that same week period of time, a petition has circulated, begging people to keep boys out of the girls' locker rooms. I said, "Are Almaral County Public Schools unsafe?" Did I not make a convincing argument that, yes, they are? And now on Thursday night, in front of an auditorium of outsiders, folks not tied to this region, thanks to Spillman's word choice, Colonel Sean Reeves, the Almaral County Police Chief, is gonna have to have extra law enforcement there and pray, pray to God. I am a God-fearing person. I am a God-fearing person, okay? I am literally gonna pray on air, "Lord, I thank you for everything you have blessed this community with, and thank you so much for our family and our health and, and, and this wonderful family you have given us. Please do not allow, please, violence of any kind on Thursday night at this Almaral County School Board meeting."
Amen.
And if there is, it's on Spillman. And straight up leadership negligence and malpractice and malfeasance. And it's crazy. Yonkin can get ousted, Yonkin can oust Burt Ellis from the Board of Visitors for malfeasance and malpractice, and Yonkin positioned Ellis on the Board of Visitors at UVA to do exactly what Ellis did.
Yeah.
And then he ousts him. Terminates him. But Spillman can run amok without any accountability or oversight. And then, after running amok without accountability and oversight, have the backing in print on the record with a signature of her vice chair, chair, and superintendent.
Yeah.
It's a fucking wild world we're living in right now.
Definitely is.
All right, I need to get to highlights and lowlights of last night's Almaral, of last night's Charlottesville City Council meeting. We have the Sam Sanders clip. Here's City Manager Sam Sanders talking about the $6.2 million deal that's in play. Overwhelming support last night, overwhelming support. Can we put a couple of the, the flyers from the listing, from the marketing listing for the six, for the, the building on screen? You still have those, right?
Uh, yeah, you're talking about the-
2,000 Holiday Drive. You still have the marketing collateral-
Yeah.
-from the, from the listing? Put them on screen, if you could, please, sir. And, and, and ladies and gentlemen, tomorrow on the show, we have, uh, School Board Candidate Jim Dillon Beck, who Judah knows well. So here's the building that's now under study period. The city's got a deal in place for 6.2 million. It's under study period now. Show a couple of the other slides, if you can. Here's the location. I mean, just a phenomenal piece of property, phenomenal piece of property. Couple other slides put on screen. There's the, the first floor footprint. You got, what, the second floor and basement footprint? Phenomenal piece of property here. Sam Sanders, we're gonna play a clip for you from last night's meeting of Sam trying to set the record of what's happening here. I appreciate what Sam tries to do here. Sanders, you get props from me here. Sam Sanders is, is, is turning things around a little bit, from my standpoint. My perception of Sam is turning around. Uh, this is a highlight from last night's City Council meeting. Do we have that sound ready to go?
Yeah.
All right, let's, 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 let's play that sound in three. Let's play that sound in two. Let's play that sound now, Sam Sanders.
Uh, but ideally, the, the priority that has been expressed and committed as it relates to homelessness in the city of Charlottesville is that we have a great need for low-barrier shelter. That is what I have committed to working on for two years now, as I recently expressed in sharing the homeless intervention plan that we have been working on all this time. And we have successfully found an opportunity to acquire a substantial piece of property, not just the building itself, but the land that is available as well, allows us to attack this issue from multiple angles. And while it may be viewed as, uh, an attempt to move people away from other people, it doesn't, because they're still in the city and they're still, uh, adjacent to folks who are probably going to express concerns when they ultimately find out what it is that we're proposing to do at the site. It is important that we remember, and I have stated clearly, my position on this matter on behalf of council is that this is a human issue, and we need to have people have a place to live inside, as many people as we possibly can get inside, and that is what this priority project has been about. So the goal is for us to get this site acquired, uh, and it has not been a perfect process. A real estate transaction is really all that we have in front of you at this time. There is a lot of work that has to be done to determine how to activate the space, because it is an office building today. It is not meant for people to sleep in it overnight and to do all the many things that we need to do to serve their needs. But we will continue to work on those things and make sure that we can get a plan together as quickly as we possibly can and activate that site as soon as possible. So again, I like to write my own headlines and my own narrative because it always gets written for me, and I wanna make sure that it's accurate.
Okay, that, that's Sam Sanders. So for, props, props to Sam for trying to set the stage here. My mic's back on?
Yeah.
Props to Sam for trying to set the stage here. Props to Hunter, who's watching the program, for helping put this deal together. It was extremely important that you heard the city manager say that this is not us trying to pocket the homeless or push them out. It's literally giving them the hand up, not handout, but the hand up they need to transition back into society.
Yeah.
Okay? And a couple of words of advice that I wanna offer on the show with our platform, we need a different moniker than, than the word "shelter" here. Shelter is too restrictive on what this is. Maybe the word is best suited for campus, I don't know. This is a branding strategy here. It's one of our specialties. Shelter is too restrictive. It's not just a shelter. We're talking like literally a campus, right? Maybe it's like some kinda like, I don't know. It's like, it's a vest, it's like a, it's a transitional opportunity is what's being offered here, to get back into society.
It, it might be a little early to label it anything, since we don't know what ultimately they're going to use it for.
Very fair.
Uh, there, there is certainly some, uh, some opposition to it, uh, but the fact that people-
What, what opposition is? What, I, I'm not hearing much opposition to this.
I mean, there was a-
There was a homeless gentleman that spoke before council last night who said, "You are trying to pocket us away from everyone else."
And I think we both know that, uh-
I don't think that's accurate, nor do I buy that.
I don't necessarily buy it either.
It's within walking distance of a bus station.
The fact of the matter is that Charlottesville is a tiny city. Uh, there is no pushing someone out. Uh, if they mean pushing them away from the downtown mall, yes, that's the point. And I, I think that, uh, I think that Conan Owen said something, uh, something very wise the other day, uh, when he was here, talking about the fact that there is nothing that is owed to anyone in Charl- is owed to anyone in Charlottesville, and the fact that, uh, you know, we're doing this to try to help people, and if someone doesn't appreciate the hand up, uh, there's nothing you can do. All we can do is our best, and clearly, Sam Sanders is doing his best in this matter.
Yeah, I mean, I said yesterday, when all your sales tax collection, when all your, when all your levers to fund your yearly budget are down
Yeah.
and they've been down for back-to-back years, Houston, you got a problem. And most business people would say, "Houston, you got a problem," in the first six months of year one that they're down. The city didn't start realizing it had a problem until the, uh, second year and six months into the second year. If my business, my rent collections, my, my, uh, the, the, the revenue we generate, our top-line revenue we generate for the parent company, the Miller Organization, the consulting, the advertising, if we're down, uh, on a 30-day period, I'm trying to figure out what the issue is. The city's waited 18 months before trying to figure out a solution. Literally 18 months. Now we're trying to figure it out here, okay? Six months into year two. And, and to Judah's point, taking the houseless off the business district and positioning them on a 27,000-square-foot building, within a 27,000-square-foot building on acreage that's within feet of a bus stop, within feet of the Rivanna Trail, probably in better proximity, definitely in better proximity to Alamo County
Yeah.
Is, is, is...
Right on the border.
Is a success. You can, maybe if you're Alamo County resident, be like, this, this moves it closer to the county, but it's still in the city. This is a success. And what Sam offered commentary-wise, I respect it, because that took some courage to do. This is a win-win-win-win. This is a win for the city, this is a win for taxpayers, this is a win for homeowners, this is a win for tenants, this is a win for business owners, this is a win for students, this is a win for tourists, this is a win for City Hall, this is a win for City Council. There's no, but this is a win for the homeless.
I was gonna say, you're forgetting someone.
This is a win for, there's no one that loses here.
Yeah.
Highlights and lowlights from City Council meeting. Last night, we had, uh, Chief Brackney in the house, sitting next to former Mayor Nakia Walker, both masked up in the, uh, in council chambers. Nakia Walker, clad in pink, headdress and shirt. Chief Brackney, uh, had some very straightforward commentary on the State of Union, the State of the Union on policing in Charlottesville today. I, I, I have a bone to pick with Juan Diego Wade and how he's managing these meetings. When you're given three minutes to speak and you allow somebody to go 30 to 40 seconds over, that's against the rules.
It's cutting into someone else's time.
It's not cutting into somebody else's time, it just makes the meeting long and it sets a bad precedent.
That's fair.
It's, it's, it's a poor parliamentary procedure. Robert would be very disappointed on how his rules are being executed and managed. Let's, let's, let's play Brackney. What is Brackney doing here? Brackney in three, Brackney in two, Brackney in one.
Good evening.
I'm Dr. Rochelle Brackney, the former police chief for Charlottesville Police Department. Counselors, when you allocated $1 million to a clean team as ambassadors for the Charlottesville Mall, when you started down the road trying to criminalize the unsheltered and the housing insecure under the guise of safety and support, and as you are considering allocating $1 million to establish, re-establish, school resource officers in our schools, I ask one simple, urgent question. What problem are you attempting to solve? Because I can tell you what problem I was attempting to solve, when I made the difficult, often unpopular decisions rooted in equity, dignity, and justice. When I disbanded the SWAT team, I was trying to solve the problem of racism, misogyny, and homophobia, the kind that thrives unchecked in militarized, specialized policing units. In 2022, SWAT had $8,000 allocated and a special response team zero. In 2026, SWAT has zero and a specialized response team $60,000. Who are the special responders and what is the problem they are attempting to solve? When I disassociated CPD from JADE, the task force, I was trying to solve the problem of addiction being treated as a crime rather than a public health crisis. I was working to stop the cycle of locking up people who need treatment, not jail. So I ask you again, when you fund by an additional $2 million this year to the budget, when you fund militarized operations like the 3A Task Force against your residents, what problem are you really attempting to solve? When I removed the school resource officers from classrooms five years ago, I was trying to solve the problem of the criminalization of normal teen behavior, things like talking back in class or skipping classes, which should never result in handcuffs. I was solving the problem of school resource officers being used to enforce administrative rules, not protect our students. I wanted to decouple law enforcement from the classroom, the cafeteria, and the in-school suspensions, and to return education to educators, to care to those who are most in need. Those actions were not about being soft, they were about being smart. They were not anti-safety, they were pro-humanity. So I ask you again, what problem are you attempting to solve when you propose millions in punitive programs in the name of safety? Is a $1 million clean team about cleanliness or about sanitizing public space, who make people, who may make us uncomfortable? Is recriminalizing homelessness really about support or about control? Are SROs about keeping students safe or putting police back in a system that disproportionately disciplines Black and Brown youth? You say these measures are about health, about order, about community care, but the path you are taking looks a lot like the old system of punishment, policing, and exclusion, just with a softer name.
Thank you.
So as you continue down this road of criminalization under the guise of support, I leave you with this. What problem are you really trying to solve, and who will be hurt if you get it wrong? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, fir-, 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 first thing is this. Mayor Juan Diego Wade, Mayor Wade, take control of the meeting, please. There is a limited time per speaker to speak. You let Brackney go more than 30 seconds over the three-minute threshold. Who is the walking activist? Who's the pedestrian crosswalk activist? What's his name?
Uh, Kevin Cox.
If Kevin Cox went 45 seconds over his time limit, Juan Diego Wade, I assure you, would have stopped him from talking well before going 45 seconds over. Last night, he does not keep Brackney from going 45 seconds over the limit. Mayor Wade, why is there a standard for Kevin Cox, an activist, who must stop at the three-minute marker for public speaking, and Dr. Brackney, who is not a medical doctor, we're talking a PhD here, using the word "doctor," I don't know a lot of PhDs that use the word "doctor" in their name, she does, going 45 seconds over with a red carpet basically offered to her by Juan Wade to go extended? At this point, Brackney is, is an activist. She's talking about school resource officers hating on them.
Yeah.
She's hating on the homeless ordinance, calling it criminalization.
Yeah.
She's hating on the police, she's hating on the SWAT team, she's hating on spending, she's hating on schools and how they manage troubled kids.
Yeah.
How the system manages people of color. But Brackney was given 45 seconds of extra time with a red carpet offered by Juan Diego Wade. Kevin Cox goes five seconds over the three minutes, he's immediately shut up and shut down by the same man. That is a double standard hypocrisy rooted in, you finish the blank. My next point on Brackney, you ready for this? My next point on Brackney, why is the fired police chief coming back to meetings to speak before the city she had a lawsuit against for wrongful termination?
Good question.
Brackney literally rolled out a lawyer from the Johnny Cochran Law Firm, trotted him out in front of City Hall and next to the free speech wall, and tried to sue the city for millions of dollars for wrongful termination, because she, she claimed that she was fired because she was a Black woman. It wasn't fired, she doesn't remember that she was fired because the police department had vacancies all over the wazoo, that the police department was fractured in morale, that the, 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 the crime rate was up, murders were prolific, that the brand of Charlottesville policing was one that was splintered and dirtied. None of all those things she remembers, but I do. I do. And now the brand that Charlottesville policing i- is, is one of, uh, full department, no vacancies, graduating rookies from academies, graduating police from academies into rookies. Uh, morale is up.
Yeah.
Crime is down. Violent crime is being solved. Criminals are apprehended and arrested, and the image and the brand of policing is one Something's gotta be in the water. Something's in the water. How else do you explain in a one-week period? We didn't even show Nakia's clip from, from, from last night's council meeting. Last night's council meeting had a fired police chief offer her State of the Union on Charlottesville. And last night's council meeting had a embattled former mayor who compared the city of Charlottesville to rape and poetry and allegory that was covered by every national and global media platform in the world. All speak before council. Only in Charlottesville, in one-week period of time, a week's period of time, does an school board member compare high school students to the Ku Klux Klan. Only in the Charlottesville area, in a one-week's period of time, do high school girls have to beg the community to sign a digital petition to keep boys from staying at, staring at their naked bodies in locker rooms, under the, under the guise of being trans-curious and considering transitioning to, to, to female. Only in the Charlottesville area does a fired former police chief that sued the city for $10 million, trying to shake down the city for $10 million, claiming Black woman fired, got nothing from the city, comes back to council, speaks before them, and does a State of the Union on what's going on, and only in the Charlottesville area does the embattled former mayor, who compared the city she represented to being raped, that then led to coverage in the New York Times, also speak before council on the same night the former police chief spoke before council. Only in Charlottesville, only in Charlottesville, Virginia. The Tuesday edition of the I Love Seville Show, Judah Wickauer and Jerry Miller. Tomorrow, we have an Alamo County School Board candidate named Jim Dillon Beck on the show. I don't know much of this guy. Judah's vouching for him, speaks for him, Ben Bryce vouched for him, you know, I, Judah's opinion carries a lot, a lot of weight for me. He's, he's got competition here, right?
He does have competition.
If, if...
I don't know if the competition wants to be competition, but, uh...
If this guy wants to win, he, 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 he's gotta use the Spillman fallout to his advantage.
Hmm, yeah.
He's, he's gotta do it. He can't do what, uh, you know, who was the person in the Jack Jewett District that came on the program, that rode the motorcycle and that came by here?
Was that, no, uh, that wasn't Smith, that was, um...
Who lost to the lady who seems to be of the Allison Spillman family tree? You know who I'm talking about.
Yeah.
We're both Googling, huh? What is this, old age right here? Sally Duncan, the winner. Dave Shreve
Yeah.
comes by with his motorcycle helmet in hand. Shreve refused to go after Sally Duncan and her ties to activism in Charlottesville. Got slaughtered. I predicted a 10-point defeat, more than 10 points. He didn't go on the offensive. You tell your boy Jim Dillon Beck, if Jim Dillon Beck doesn't want to lose by 10-plus points in super-blue Alamo County, that's getting bluer every day, that he better go on the offensive on the Allison Spillman stuff.
I'm sure you'll tell him.
Because if he doesn't go offensive on the Allison Spillman stuff, dude's gonna lose by 10-plus points. He's on the show tomorrow at 12:30. So long.